We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda with action is under Proclamations. We have two proclamations, one's for Silver City Library Week and the next will be Pro Bono Week. And if you're here to receive the Silver City Library Week, meet me at the podium. Whereas libraries are the heart of their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls. And whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues. And whereas librarians are trained tech savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like eBooks. And whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, provide residents with resume writing classes, 24/7 homework help, and financial planning services to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement. And whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas the week of September 22nd through 28th will see celebrations of literature and literacy in Silver City, particularly the Southwest Festival of the Written Word. And whereas the Silver City Public Library is celebrating its renovation and new integrated library system in an open house on September 25th. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim September 22nd through 28th, 2013, as Silver City Library Week. And encourage all residents to visit the library this week, to take advantage of library resources, and to join in our community celebrations of literature and literacy. And we have stolen with us from the library.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you and thank you for, Mayor, for your support. And again, to invite everybody to the open house that we're having Wednesday, I'm sorry, tomorrow, Wednesday, from 3 to 5 at the public library. And I will be doing a little bit of a report later here on the agenda, so thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Next we have Pro Bono Week. Whereas one in every four of the one man, 750,988 New Mexicans live in poverty and experience legal problems, with the majority of these civil problems being family law issues, divorce, child support, custody, abuse, consumer issues, credit harassment, utility nonpayment, bankruptcy issues, health issues, Medicaid, government insurance, nursing home, employment issues, unemployment benefits, pension, lost jobs, and housing issues, unsatisfactory repairs, foreclosure, eviction, poor living conditions. And whereas each year, the low income citizens of Silver City lack access to legal assistance for their legal problems that are often critical to their safety and independence, forcing them to resolve complex legal problems on their own. And whereas the need for legal aid in New Mexico is dire. Funding for low income New Mexicans who need civil legal assistance has not yet been met, with the consequences being a lack of access to justice, which is devastating for the poor and which weakens our democratic society as a whole. And whereas although 72% of the members of the legal community in the 16th District donated their time and talents in free legal service each year, a huge unmet need for legal assistance remains for the disadvantaged in our area. And whereas, sponsored by the Access to Justice Commission and the American Bar Association, with support from local pro bono committees statewide, Pro Bono Week 2013, from October 14th to 18th, 2013, will educate the public about the extensive work New Mexico lawyers are doing by donating their time to improve the lives and vulnerable members of our community. And will encourage more individuals in the legal community to get involved in pro bono work and financially support the legal aid system. And whereas, Pro Bono Week 2013 will feature legal clinics throughout the state assisting New Mexicans who greatly need legal assistance but cannot afford to pay for that help. And will also feature recognition events throughout the state of New Mexico honoring lawyers and judges for making a difference in New Mexico. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim October 14th through the 18th, 2013, as Pro Bono Week, and urge all residents to recognize the contributions of our legal community helping those most in need.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a couple of things I'd like to announce to the community. And one is that, in case you didn't know, Legal Aid had a staff here of two lawyers and a couple of people who did the best they could in this county, Luna County, and Hidalgo County. Legal Aid has lost its funding, for the most part, through actions probably in Congress. And they are down to one lawyer, no secretary, and no other lawyer to help that one lawyer who was supposed to cover all three counties. That's one example of how people who have no money are forced to represent themselves. Fortunately, in this community, over 90% of the private practice lawyers have helped throughout the year and taken on cases they didn't have to take on and have done it totally for free. The last thing I'll tell you is that we are trying to keep this thing, this Pro Bono Day, which we are doing at the county building, at the county event building this year, on the 17th, I think it's Thursday, of October, and we're going to do a couple of things different. Number one, we're not going to have speakers to introduce every section. The community has already been introduced to the speakers and to the general events. If people want to show up at noon, there's going to be a presentation on family law. And from 1 o'clock on, the lawyers who will show up will be just to assist people. And the last thing that's different is that we're going to have some people here from Doñana County, talking to anybody who has issues with immigration because it's becoming more of a problem all over southern New Mexico. So those are the things that I think the community needs to know and to take advantage of if they're in need for free legal advice. And if anyone shows up and is unable to meet with the lawyers on that day, then we will have sign up sheets so that they can have a session in private at the lawyers offices at a later date, free of cost. Thank you very much. I appreciate your continued support. We've been doing this now for a number of years, and this city and the county, and the other cities like Baird and Hurley have been very helpful in helping us announce this event. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public info. I remind you, you have five minutes to speak. If you're looking at me, I'll give you a one minute warning. And the first up is Babe McElmont. And you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alex Brown, members of the staff. On behalf of the Arts Council, I just want to thank you for all your help in producing our fifth annual Pick-a-Mania a couple of weekends ago in the park. Without the support of Alex and Ann putting photos up on the town website, and LeAnn and purchasing, you all were so very helpful to us. Thank you so much. And of course, the Parks Department. I want to thank them in particular because Peter Peña, Domicio, Jesus, Hank, and all the others put in so much effort. The park was absolutely beautiful to begin with. They take such pride in it, and it really shows. And we had a very good crowd on Saturday, and so many people came up and told us what a beautiful setting we have. And it's unlike a lot of festivals they go to that are in very sterile settings, but they just thought the park was beautiful. And of course, to see everybody out there picking up the trash and making sure things stay neat and clean is really commendable. Also want to thank the police department for providing some security for us and helping us there. And also, we have a volunteer who's on staff, Jim Coates, is on our selection committee, and I want to thank him for his participation. We really do feel like the town of Silver City partners with the members of Region Arts Council to make these festivals and events successful. Thank you so much.
And next up is Frank Donahue and Rob Norvise. Gold Star Mother's Day, you have the floor.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Frank Donahue, this is Robert Norvise, and we're from the local Marine Corps League detachment. But this is not about the Marine Corps League, this is about Gold Star Mother's Day. It's been nationally recognized since 1936. And it started actually with the mothers of World War I. And if you would mind, we could read something?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the time. The last Sunday in September is recognized as Gold Star Mother's Day. This is a day for citizens of the United States to publicly express love, sorrow, and reverence for these moms. An American Gold Star mother is a mom who has suffered the supreme sacrifice of motherhood and the loss of their sons or daughters in World War II. This Sunday, we will be hosting a luncheon at Billy's BBQ at 2138 Highway 180 East at 1:00 PM. It's encouraged that veteran service organizations wear their uniforms. As Mr. Donahue talked about, it is since 1928 that the mothers have been a chartered chapter and a 501(c)(3), and an inspiration to all of us. We hope to draw awareness and invite you, if it's appropriate, to the luncheon.
Will you come up?
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Thank you. Next up is council's brief comments. Councilor Maronis, would you like to start? Sorry, I ad-libbed the brief part.
To keep it brief, no comments, Mr. Mayor.
Well done.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a meeting with some of the top town officials, and we discussed what I thought would be interesting for the people was to have a little walk down in Silver. And after discussing it, we did come up with a solution. We discussed a proposal that comes about it, and for those people that were disappointed, thank you, but at this time and point, it will not be a feasible idea because there will be too many obstacles to overcome. But I would like to thank those people that were supporters of this idea here. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor.
No comment. Sorry. Brief comment, Mayor. I just want to thank Assistant Chief Tim Patrick and his team for everything they've done during the floods and to, you know, to take care of the folks that have been stranded up in the Gila and to search for folks that have been lost. So thank you.
We've been friends for a long time, so that was totally inappropriate. Next on the agenda, are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing on the agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of September 10th, 2013.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council, September 10th, 2013.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council, September 10th, 2013. Does that mean discussion? There's a motion and a second and no discussion. All those in favor, say in the front row saying hi.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on. Next on the agenda is reports, staff reports. Mr. Brown.
We have two, one from Tim and one from Mike.
Ladies first.
Okay. Well, in the spirit of celebration of Silver City Library Week, what I'd like to do today for the report is take a look at the bigger picture, kind of looking back over the last couple of years, where we came from, sort of where we're headed. Three years ago, we set out with a vision for the public library. And what we tried to articulate at that point, what we came up with, is that the public library would foster and sustain community. That was kind of our primary vision for the library. And we envisioned doing that by creating a welcoming space for all the citizens in the community, by connecting people to ideas through books, through other means, through other people, and by building strong relationships through shared cultural experiences. I like to think that, you know, the way I kind of conceptualize things and our staff worked on it and thought about it is really having a three-point plan over a three-year period. And the three primary points that we were looking at was a staff reorganization, infrastructure improvements, and developing community collaborations. And I'd like to talk about each of those points a little bit in terms of what we've done to date. With the reorganization, the primary goal behind reorganizing our staff was to increase our capacity for community outreach and programming, directly going back to this idea of supporting and building community, and that really being a key point for us. And also to increase our teamwork and our productivity and providing opportunities for our staff to be able to actually develop their skills and cross-train as well. And we realized to accomplish everything that we wanted to do, we couldn't do it with the existing structures. And so, we were able to go in and basically develop some new job descriptions, kind of change the way that we did things, and develop some teams within the library. Primarily, one of the most important ones was really our programming team and putting together a programming team. What that has led to, I think, has been some real successes with our programming. And I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about all the things that we've done. We've been able to increase our programming for adults, definitely, in terms of what we've been doing, the number of programs and the kind of programs. But I'm going to highlight right now some of the ones for children specifically. And one of the things that we've been able to do is increase our regular programming. We used to have a, and still have, a regular storytime on Wednesday mornings. But in addition to our storytime, we now do a weekly Lego club for the younger kids, Lego Mindstorms Club for the older kids. They actually use computers to program motors and things that work with the Legos to animate them. We have a chess club that's ongoing, and now we've added a Saturday morning storytime as well, which has been well received by families, particularly who, you know, have busy work schedules and can't get there on our Wednesday mornings. So we've been able to expand the regular ongoing programming quite a bit. The other thing I'd like to highlight is the changes that we made this past year to the summer reading program. In the past, we'd run the program generally about five or six weeks. We expanded the program this last summer to be an eight-week program. We had 465 childrens and teens that registered for our program. And in the past, over that five-week period, we generally provided about 20 different programs. Throughout the summer, this summer, in June and July, we had 72 different programs that were held during the summer reading program. And our total attendance during that time for all of our programs was 1,223. So we were able to, I think, really expand our reach with the same staffing this last year. Some of the other things that we've been able to do as a result were to expand our online presence, both through the implementation of a Facebook page and now also a library blog that we've had going. And I know a lot more people are going to those resources for information, not just about what's going on at the library, but also other resources in our community. We try and post things of interest to the community as a whole, and also highlight resources that we know that are out there that might be of interest to our community as well. As far as infrastructure improvements, we were looking at two things. One was our physical space and also our technology and information systems. And as you all know, we went through a rather major renovation project last year, and we all survived it. And I think our patrons did quite well through that as well. They were very, very understanding about all the changes that we went through and things kind of moving continually. But we did a number of things, including roof repairs and new roofing in part of the building. We now have a new heating and cooling system, including air conditioning. We had swamp coolers before, we now have air conditioning. We put in energy efficient lighting throughout the building, a new insulation and ceiling system. We were able to upgrade the electrical system, which means that we could also incorporate new data drops and new electrical drops. These are kind of key to keeping up with the times and being able to provide the services that our patrons need and want. We're finding more and more people coming in with mobile devices and laptops, and we need to accommodate that. We were also able to carpet and paint the building, and we've gotten very good feedback from our patrons about just the brightness, the fresh look, and I think people are pleased with the results. As far as the technology and information systems go, we started off, many of these things are kind of behind the scenes, some of them are things that people are aware of and may notice, and some of them are not. We installed a new phone system, one of the first things that we did. We had originally just one phone line coming into the library and one fax line. We now have multiple lines, we have voicemail. We put in a public access computer management system. The primary reason that we did that is we spent a lot of staff time taking reservations for computers, monitoring the amount of time that people had on the computers, letting people know that they needed to get off, or, you know, they had X number of minutes left. That has now all been automated. And so, when our patrons come in, they can just get on with their library card, they don't need to wait in line to talk to a staff person to get onto the computers. And we are able to spend our time actually assisting the patrons with the problems that they might have, questions they might have, when they're on the computers, rather than just spending our time doing reservations and time management. We were also able to, after we finished the renovation, we replaced all of the public computers throughout the building. We were very fortunate to have some funding, I think it was the year before when they were actually purchased at the end of that fiscal year, through funds from the county to actually replace all of our public access computers. Those would be our internet computers. And so those are all up to date. The nice thing about that is they all have the same interface on them and the same look and feel. Before, we had a number of different computers that were different operating systems, different look, different feel. And this way, when a patron comes in, they get on one computer, it's going to be just like another computer that they get on, and there's more consistency across the board. And then the last information systems piece that we just put in place was the implementation of our new integrated library system. We made the switch over on October 9th, and that's been quite exciting for us. Our old system was no longer being updated by the vendor. Our new system provides a lot of features that the old one didn't have. And what this integrated library system is, what the public sees on their end is the public access catalog, where they go in and look up books to see what we have. It also has the parts that the librarians use, which is our cataloging components, our circulation component that we use to keep track of the items. But on the patron end, there are a number of new features. They can log on from home, so they can view their account and see what items they have checked out currently. They can renew their items from home. They can place reserves on items, and we will contact them when those items come in. They can request interlibrary loans and suggest titles for purchase as well. The new system also allows us to communicate better with our patrons. They can opt to be notified about reserves or overdues through text or email, as well as, you know, the traditional phone or regular mail. And I know that that's already in place. I just got an overdue notice myself for my overdue books. By a text this week. But I think it's going to help with efficiency, as well as just hopefully reducing some of the postage costs that we've had, and that a lot of people really prefer to have text and email notification, and now we can do that. It also allows us to disseminate newsletters electronically for people that opt into the newsletter list. And we are very excited to have this piece in place because the next thing that we would like to start looking at is getting downloadable eBooks in place, and we're hoping to do that early in 2014. So early next year, we'd like to have that in place. The third point that I want to address a little bit was our community collaborations. And again, part of the reorganization and looking at things differently has allowed us to get out in the community, not just be in the library all the time. We've got a number of library staff who participate in different committees around town. It gives them an idea of what the needs are in the community and ways to partner with people in addressing those needs and other organizations. And I'm not going to list all of our partners, but I'd like to highlight a few of the collaborations that I think have been very valuable for us. One of them has been working with the Arts and Cultural District and the Coordinating Council. It's really played a valuable role for us in helping to build partnerships, learning about what's going on in the community, and having individuals that we can work with and other organizations that we can work with to develop programs of various kinds. And one that I'd just like to highlight is, this summer, signature event for the Arts and Cultural District is the Clay Festival. And we felt that it would be wonderful if there could be an educational component of that Clay Fest as well, and one that would be addressed towards the children in our community and also outreach to the mining district. So we were able to put in place with the Arts and Cultural District something we called Clay Play, Exploring Our Heritage. And we were able to bring in teaching artists to work with the youth in our community. We provided three days of workshops, both at the Silver City Public Library as well as at the Baird Public Library. And currently, we have the kids' projects on display, a little art exhibit at the Silver City Public Library. If you come for the open house tomorrow, please take a look at the clay projects as well. The kids did a great job. They used clay as a way to really explore history, the history of our area, and various cultural aspects of our local community. Another really wonderful relationship has been with the Western Institute of Lifelong Learning. We've collaborated with them on Reflections of an Artist series. It's been very wonderful to work with them. They've been bringing in different authors and doing kind of a big event, and we've been doing a smaller event at the library the day after, what we call a second chance event. It's a nice opportunity to provide a little bit more intimate setting for people to meet with the various authors that are coming in. And I know that through the collaboration, we saw an increase in the number of people attending those events than if we were to go out and try and do those things on our own. So I think collaboration has been really valuable. And then the last one I'm going to highlight because it's coming up here finally, the end of this week, is the Southwest Festival of the Written Word. And that's been in the works for a long time. But there will be a book festival or a book fiesta here at the end of the week, starting on Friday and running through the weekend. I believe there's something like 50 authors total, local authors as well as regional authors, who will be doing book signings, discussions, publishers and vendors selling things here as well. And again, with support from our friends of the library, we will be able to sponsor seven different events at the public library this weekend as part of the festival. And some of these will be after our events, so we'll have programming Saturday afternoon as well as Sunday morning. And there is a full schedule, I know, in the September Desert Exposure, I think it's on that last page of the Desert Exposure. But I'd really encourage everybody to take advantage of these resources this weekend and... advantage of these resources this weekend and really help celebrate the Southwest Festival of the Written Word. I'd like to take just a couple minutes to talk about our future priorities and where we're going. One of the big priorities this year will be implementing ebooks, hopefully early in 2014. Another thing that we have really targeted is a focus on technology and information literacy training. We're planning to go out there and look for funding to create what we think of as a portable computer lab, so that we can turn our multipurpose room into a training facility as needed to provide technology training in the community. And looking at train the trainer models, so that we can train other individuals in the community as well as our staff to go out there and really provide this kind of training. We will be focusing on teen and young adult program development through collaborations with the schools and organizations providing youth services. We're developing a plan and a budget this year to remodel our children's library, it was repainted and carpeted, but we didn't do much else with that space and we'd really like to create a space that is more inviting for children in the community. And also exploring some additional online services that we can provide through the library, we're looking at everything from language learning types of programs to audiobooks, music downloads and a number of other things that are out there. So we'll be exploring those and seeing what might best meet the needs of our community. In terms of upcoming programs, I'm happy to announce that we received a notification that we'll be receiving a grant for a science series geared towards adults. It's called Pushing the Limits: Making Sense of Science, a reading, viewing and discussion series for rural libraries. And I would like to thank our programming and outreach librarian, Lillian Galloway, who was the one who went after that funding and was successful in getting it. We will also be bringing back our concert series in the new year. So with that, I would just like to conclude by again inviting the public to come and enjoy the open house tomorrow from 3 to 5. We will have demonstrations of our new online catalog, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to show you how it works. September is also library card signup month and so tomorrow, for anybody who's lost a library card, we are going to be offering free replacement cards throughout the day tomorrow. And I'd like to take a moment to thank our library staff, who has just been fantastic and I think has done some really excellent work these last couple of years. We have some very talented and very dedicated people and I really wholeheartedly thank the staff for the work that they've done. I'd also like to thank our partners, many partners throughout the community that have helped us in so many ways, we would not be able to do what we've done without their support. Our library volunteers, our board members, we have very dedicated library volunteers and board members, both Friends of the Library, the trustees and the foundations, the foundation, you mayor and our town councilors for your ongoing support, thank you so much. And our library patrons, they're really the reason that we're here, they keep us motivated, they keep our work very interesting and it really is what, they are the ones that make our work so rewarding. So, thank you.
Just so you know, six years ago, the only reports I got were about the deficiencies in the library. Six years later, we have more than just a simple database that didn't work. And it's very impressive, the work that you've done. Thank you. Assistant Chief, Tim Heidrick.
I'll try to leave it short. Not a competition.
All right. No. I only have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. In the fire department, the last couple of weeks, we have been kind of busy. One thing I'd like to pass on to the mayor, members of the council is, on September 8th, our Silver City Fire Department Honor Guard was asked to go to the Fire Expo up in Socorro at the State Fire Academy and present the colors for their opening ceremonies. They got a very good job well done from the State Fire Marshal's Office. During that week of the Fire Expo on the 14th, they had a awards banquet and one of our driver operators, Tommy Chavez, received the firefighter of the year award from the state. Tommy's been instrumental in two victim rescues out of two separate house fires in almost one year's time. So he was recognized by the state, so that's a pretty big accomplishment there for him. On September 12th, four members of the fire department did respond up to the Middle Fork and helped remove nine individuals from the Middle Fork that were trapped on the west side of the river. Problem was, they were literally trapped between a rock and a river. They couldn't get out to the other trails because of the bluffs. Search and rescue and some other individuals found a window of opportunity between the rains that particular week, when the rivers were going down, that we could go in there, remove these nine individuals and get them back safely on the other side of the river. I want to really talk about the individuals that went up there, some of the firefighters, they did an excellent job, they really had to pack in a lot of technical equipment, they had to go in a few miles before they actually got to the individuals. And besides this packing, what I'd consider a day pack with some extra water and food and stuff, they also packed not only rope rescue technical equipment, they also packed some swift water rescue technical equipment. They went in there, did the job, packed out. So I really commend my firefighters for that one. And on September 18th, five more members were requested to Muggion by search and rescue to help with a possible technical evac there. Search and rescue was worried about, because of the flooding that hit Muggion and the surrounding areas, they were up there looking for a lost person and they wanted us on standby in case they found them and needed to bring them out, it's kind of all day affair. But other than that, business is normal with the fire department. That's all I got.
Thanks, Chief. Just so you know, the State Fire Marshal's Office is still sending this greeting, you have a letter that they're going to audit your fire funding. Any other reports, Mr. Root? Next up is a public hearing entitled, "Approval/Disapproval of Ordinance Number 1224, An Ordinance Amending the Town's Official Zoning Map by Rezoning from Residential A (R- A) to Commercial C." A parcel described as Lot 3, Unit 3, North Silver Heights subdivision of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, 3201 Ridge Loop Road. The applicant is Bear Mountain Land and Cattle Company, represented by General Partner, Richard M. Steinzig. The town council will serve as the hearing board and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had expertise discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communication from any party to this case?
No, sir.
Hearing not yet all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Hi, Richard Steinzig.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I'm about to give
That the testimony I'm about to give.
Testimony I'm about to give.
In the matter before this council
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
The truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by the Director of IPNZ Commission or by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant, staff or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witnesses may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions shall be made to the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion and directing of question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, is there anything else you wish to be reflective in the record? And then we'll see if the board is prepared to make a decision. And we have a little bit of a glitch and Counselor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I need for a short break.
Mr. Mayor, I second your motion.
There's a motion and a second for a short break. Follow the favor sign if I was saying I.
Aye.
The opposing motion period will be on break. Please do not discuss this hearing while we're on break. We'll call this meeting and hearing back to order. Reminder, everybody that was sworn in, you are still under oath. And the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you very much for asking the council to keep their comments brief so I can take a lengthy time in presenting the discussion this evening. Tonight, we're talking about the structure at 3201 Ridge Loop Road, it's owned by Bear Mountain Land and Cattle Company and it's going to be represented by Dr. Steinzig this evening, who's general manager of the cattle company. This is, the location of the property is this little yellow triangular piece right here and it's within the residential A and the owner has asked that it be, the zoning be amended to commercial. The area, as you can see and all know well, is that this is the hospital here, some office and multifamily dwellings here. This piece of property across the street from the applicant's property is zoned commercial and the other two structures on the property are still zoned residential A. The original zoning in the area back in 1960 was made residential A for the entire area and since then, there's been bits and pieces zoned commercial, starting in 1981 with the big tract that the hospital sits on. And ever since then, the commercial has gone around to this point here on the north side of 32nd and swings down through here on the south side of 32nd. It's on the northwest corner of Ridge Loop Road and 32nd Street, which is a dead-in street with only four structures on it, two of which are residentially used and are still zoned residential A, two of which are commercially used and one of which is the applicant property and one is, was rezoned in 1998 and has been used commercially ever since for various and sundry business nonprofit functions. The piece here has been used since 1983 as a physician's office because in the original land use code in 1960 through 1999, a physician's office was allowed in a residential A zoning area and in 1999, that changed and so the property became non-conforming use, which could be continued until the use is no longer there and then there's a year that it can be reused as that type of use. Dr. Steinzig retired in February of this year and has asked that it be rezoned so that another doctor, physician, provider can utilize the property and it will be always in the commercial areas and be able to be used as a physician's office. This is also a medically related office as well. The, let's see, this is the property at 3201 Ridge Loop Road, it looks like the property in the neighborhood, it was originally built as a residence and was used since, as I said, since 1983 as a physician's office, under the clause of the original zoning of residential A, allowing a physician's office in a residential neighborhood as long as it looked like a residence. That was done through February of this year. This is how close it actually is to the hospital, you're looking down from the parking lot of the 3201 Ridge Loop Road into the area of the hospital. The land use code of 2010 divided some of the zoning into several new categories, one of which was the commercial light, which was actually designed for such a neighborhood that has medical and other institutional aspects, but not as heavily used as a commercial highway. But until that zoning comes into effect, everything will always be considered to be commercial highway under those rules. But it's hoped that in the future, that neighborhood will go to commercial light. The commercial light zoning is one for retail, commercial, government, financial, professional and medical facilities. The reason that the commercial was looked at rather than the commercial light is because it would keep it from being a spot zone in the middle of a various neighborhood. So this, if this were changed to commercial, it would make this a commercial area, just like the adjacent areas. In his work with his neighbors, Dr. Steinzig received only positive comments from his neighbors when he contacted them. The, let's see, I think I've gone over all of this. The right to continue non-conforming use runs with the land until discontinued for a consecutive year and the physician's office was closed in February 2013. He has re-leased the property to another healthcare provider and so the continuing use is still there, but he would like to comply with the current zoning by changing it to the other commercial zone as everyone else in that, or as his neighbors in that We've gone through the findings that are required a number of times, would you like me to read them?
I don't worry, I'm preparing the record.
Okay, thank you. And it was a staff opinion that it would, that any of 1, 2, 4, or 7 of the findings would be approvable and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to the council was that the application for the zone change amendment be approved and based on 1, 2, 4 and 7 findings. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Dr. Steinzig, would you like to present your case?
My desire is to comply with the current zoning situation, which is, there's a gray area, they don't have a light zoning commercial. It's either residential or commercial. And at least, in leasing this building, I've been asked, is this zoned commercial? And I say, no, but you can have a medical practice here because that's grandfathered in on the original situation. But there might be-
Dr. Steinzig, would you like to present your case?
My desire is to comply with the current zoning situation, which is, there's a gray area. They don't have a light zoning commercial. It's either residential or commercial. And at least, in leasing this building, I've been asked, "Is this zoned commercial?", and I say, "No, but you can have a medical practice here, because that's grandfathered in on the original situation." But there might be a question, since I'm the landlord and I'm not practicing, whether that grandfathering is going to apply down the road if it's residential A. So to clarify the issue, Mr. Coats and his staff suggested we change it to commercial. But it is never going to be anything other than a doctor's office, practitioner's office, I should say, as long as I own the building. Any questions?
Any questions for this witness?
No, sir.
Are there any other witnesses in support of the application? Seeing none, are there any witnesses in opposition to the application? Seeing none. Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record? Does this conclude your case?
No, just I'd like to thank Mr. Coats and his staff for being so thorough in preparing the maps, the pictures, et cetera.
Thank you, Dr. Does any member of the hearing board have any questions for any witness?
No, sir.
Hearing non, is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Entertained a motion?
Mr. Mayor
Counselor.
I approve, move to approve Ordinance Number 1224, An Ordinance Amending the Town's Official Zoning Map by Rezoning from Residential A R-A to Commercial C. A Parcel Described as Lot 3, Unit 3, North Silver Heights Subdivision of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, 3201 Ridge Loop Road. The applicant is Bear Mountain Land and Cattle Company, represented by General Partner Richard M. Steinzig M.D., based on the following findings, numbers 1, 2, 4, and 7.
Is there a statement?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second and a discussion. I have one, I'd like to know if you would consider amending your motion to include under the now-there form, it states that the Town Council adopts the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission in their entirety. If you could add that to your motion.
Yes, sir. As you worded it?
Yes.
Can I just, I'd like to add that addition as worded by the mayor, or would you like to be repeated?
I'm going to repeat it.
Thank you.
Is it friendly?
Yes, sir.
And there's an amended motion. The motion is, "Approval of Ordinance Number 1224, An Ordinance Amending the Town's Official Zoning Map by Rezoning from Residential A R-A to Commercial C. A Parcel Described as Lot 3, Unit 3, North Silver Heights Subdivision of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, 3201 Ridge Loop Road. The applicant is Bear Mountain Land and Cattle Company, represented by General Partner Richard M. Steinzig M.D., and the Town Council also adopts the findings and recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission in their entirety."
Thank you. Yes.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Motion and a second, no discussion, roll call, please.
Counselor Pedersen?
Aye.
Counselor Wood?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Wood?
Aye.
Motion carries, and that concludes this hearing. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
I just wanted to get you know, that was the last time that you were going to have to go to the oral conference. Jim's going to be at the presentations. He's going to retire, and I just want to thank him very much for all of his work that he's done for the town of Silver City. It's been a pleasure working with him.
I'm very comfortable with the counsel on this, Jim, but your work has been definitely appreciated. You absolutely have, God, you have to do the town stuff, and it's been a long, forever in our district. Absolutely appreciate it, but you're a very honorable man. Mr. Court?
Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor. I want to thank each of you for the opportunity to serve the town. I've learned a lot being here, and part of it is how difficult and trying your work is, and how, how much more comfortable I'm going to be able to be as a citizen, because I know more about how to treat people in your seats, because you demand, or you, well, the work you do demands so much respect, and I've learned that by working with you. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank Alex and Robert and Ann for all the help they've been. Alex is a gem. He's, I really appreciate all that he's taught me. I wish I had the numbers in my head that he can pull out of the hat, you know? Thank you very much, Alex. Appreciate it. And thank you all.
Thank you.
For tonight.
I understand the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
First, a second.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any other? Motion carries, and we are adjourned.